Testing one, two.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Pastor Park, this is Christina. Can you hear me?
Hi Christina, I can hear you.
Great, I can hear you too. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Hey Christina, it's Ryan. Just checking in.
Hey there Ryan, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. I would like to call the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four City Council meeting to order at six thirty P M. Go-to webinars transcripts of this council meetings are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple app or Google Play Store and download services such as the Live Transcribe or the Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in person here in the main auditorium in the South Coast Air Quality Management District, also known as AQMD. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If anyone receives, they will be noted for the record, and when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at nine A M. and alternate Tuesdays at eight P M. And archived for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we will proceed to the pledge allegiance, the invocation, and the roll call. Please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Steve Tai, and then please remain sitting, standing for the invocation by Pastor Tim Park of the Every Church of Diamond Bar.
Together, let's pledge allegiance to the greatest flag for the greatest nation on earth.
Thank you, Mayor Lou. Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather tonight as always. And I thank you for our city leaders, for our mayor, our city council members, and for the many public servants who faithfully serve our city, and for those who protect us. And God, as we do every time we gather for our city council meetings, we ask that you would give everyone in attendance tonight wisdom. Give our leaders wisdom in every decision they make. Give the residents and business owners of our city wisdom, along with gracious attitudes as they take part in discussions tonight. Father, you've blessed us with a wonderful city here in Diamond Bar. And so, help us to be good stewards of our community. I pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you so much, Pastor Tim Park.
Thank you.
City Clerk Santana, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow.
I'm here.
Councilmember Lo.
Here.
Councilmember Tai.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
Here.
Mayor Lou.
Here. Thank you so much. Now move on to the approval of the agenda. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. The agenda is hereby approved. And we will now have our special presentations and certificates. If my colleagues can join me on the floor. We have a few presentations to make and certificate. All right. Thank you so much once again for joining us. This segment is for our special presentation and certificates of recognition. First, we would like to recognize and our good citizens' recognition. We'd like to invite Mr. David Torres up. Mr. David Torres is being recognized for being a good citizen for preventing a serious accident to another member. So, Mr. Torres, we would like to recognize you for your good deed in our community. Thank you so much. And take a photo. Thank you so much for being a good citizen in our community. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Next, we have our Through My Lens contest. Thank you so much for being here. Tonight, we are recognizing the winners of our two thousand twenty-four Through My Lens contest, photo contest. First, I would like to invite Mr. John Forbing, President of the Diamond Bar Community Foundation, to join us up here at the front. Mr. Forbing, and also a former mayor of City of Diamond Bar. Thank you, sir. The foundation, it is our contest co-sponsor. It's think to them that our winners will be getting a cash prize. Isn't that awesome? A bit about the photo contest. It was started by the city in two thousand eight as a way to boost community spirit and spotlight the photography talents of our community members, and showcase what it's like to live in Diamond Bar. Now, in its sixteenth year, the contest continues to be a win-win for residents and the city. Residents get to exercise their passion for photography, as we have seen here, and the city gets a collection of incredible photographs to showcase through the year. This year's contest received a hundred and twenty-two entries. And now, I'd like to introduce our Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Tan for our next segment. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're honoring the photos that received the highest score. Some are taking first place and the others are receiving the honorable mention. Let's start with the winners in our youth category. Our first winner is Anika Maho True. Her entry is "Midday Cricket Match" took first place in the people category. Right here.
Congratulations.
Have a C D B K for you too. Congratulations. Group photo?
Okay. Yeah. This is standing here, not too far.
And our next first-place winner is John Davy Simpson in the pets category with a send-off optional mocha mandatory, right? This is, this is. Mocha mandatory. Congratulations, congratulations. In the places category, congratulations to Michaela Simpson with her entry "The Watchful Timekeeper." Michaela. Are you related? Yes, of course. Congratulations. And our next winner, Antonio Ritchie, who couldn't be here tonight, takes the nature category with his "A Depth of Field View of a Flower." There it is. Antonio also received an honorable mention in the places category for his photo, "A Sunset Picture of the Diamond Bar Center," right there. Beautiful. Thank you. We have Councilmember Chow.
Thank you. And rounding out our youth first-place winner is Sunny Liang in the digitally altered category with "Life in Color." Oh, I see what you did there. It's a crayon. Okay. Thank you, Sunny. Congratulations. And the remaining awards in the youth division are honorable mentions. We'll start with Lisa Wang with her entry "Crystal Ball View of Diamond Bar High School" in the places category. That's cool. Is that an ice cube? What is that? Congratulations. Next is Anki Tao in the nature category with their entry "Winter Peaks." Is it Anki? Is it Anki? Oh, sorry. Anki, congratulations. And our last honoring in the youth division is Caitlin Deep with her photo "Purple Petals at Desk" in the digitally altered category. Congratulations. Congratulations. Moving on to the winners in adult division. We start with Doris Law, who takes first place in the people category with the entry "Re-Energizing with the Power of Nature." That's very cool. Congratulations. And Doris also received an honorable mention in the nature category for "Richness Beyond Emptiness Photo." Do we have that photo? Richness beyond emptiness. That's deep. Councilmember Lo?
Okay. Next up is Long Fan. His entry "You Caught Me" was selected for first place in the pets category. Oh, that's adorable.
Good job.
Our next photographer is Zach Shimawaka. He won first place in the places category with "A New Morning." Zach, hi. Good to see you. Zach also received an honorable mention in the nature category with "Sycamore in Summer." And that's just beautiful. Great job. Our next first-place winner is Evelyn Rodriguez. She's unable to make it tonight, but she placed in the nature category of "Beauty is in the Eye of the Bee Holder." In the digitally altered category, congratulations to Kelvin Chang for winning first place with his "Summer Sostus Strikes Southern California" photo.
Very dramatic. Nice.
The remaining awards in the adult division are honorable mentions. First up, Christina Trejo with her "Summer Night Rocket Launch" photo in the people category.
Our next two photographers, Ryan Hazama and Irene Tu could not join us tonight. Ryan is being recognized in the people category for his photo "Picture Perfect." And Irene's photo "Ponder Cat" is being recognized in the pets category. Valerie Tran has two entries we'd like to recognize. Her first entry "Follow the Clouds" is an honorable mention in the places category. And her next photo is in the digitally altered category titled "Water High U-Sin." The next four honorable mentions are in the nature category. We start with Dana Yuzersky with "I'm All Ears." And Rolando Colazo with his photo "Sunset at Pantera." Oh, that's nice. The last two honorees, Morad Hamid and Mosad Burah were unable to make it tonight, but they are being recognized for their photos "Spring Moon." And are you ready? Let's go.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. Let's give our amazing photographer another great round of applause. Well, now it is time to reveal this year's grand prize winner. Determining this overall winner of the photo contest is never easy, an easy task. We had incredible entries received this year, and the decision for the grand prize was especially close. With strong contenders from both youth and adult divisions. So, without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, for the hundreds in attendance and millions around the world, the grand prize winner for the two thousand twenty-four Through My Lens contest winner is Kelvin Chan. For his entry "Summer Sostus Strikes Southern California" in the adult digitally altered category. Congratulations. Thank you so much. And this concludes our contest, photo contest award presentation. Congratulations to all the winners, and thank you, everyone, for participating and for participating. And we would be honored to have a photo taken with you. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much once again for sharing your talents with us. Thank you, thank you. How about let's give our amazing photographers another great round of applause? Thank you, friends and parents for joining us. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations once again. And now we move on to our city manager reports and recommendations. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
Mayor, no additional reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And now we will move on to our public comments. Public comments, it is a time reserved on each regular meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda. That is, that are within the subject jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary. But no extended discussion and no, no extended discussion or action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted speaker cards first. Then, City Clerk Santana will ask those callers joining on the teleconference who may wish to speak on their public comment. First, I would like, we would like to call up Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city staff, and members of the audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Teen Read Week is held each year the third week in October during us in celebration of all things related to teens and reading throughout the months of October. Pick up a Teen Read Week crossword challenge at the library to test your knowledge on books and receive a prize with your completed puzzle. Teens are invited to join us for a sugar skull face painting program on Monday, October twenty-first at four P M. Learn about the history and origins of death to death and sugar skulls. We will also learn how to safely and professionally create a stunning calavera face painting to celebrate the tradition. Want to get the latest eBooks, audiobook, or digital magazine to enjoy on your tablet, computer, or smartphone? Join our digital drop-in next Wednesday, October twenty-first at one P M. And learn how to download them for free with your library card. Also, join us for an evening of messy fun with paint next Thursday, October twenty-fourth at four P M. We will experiment on canvas with different painting tools, including brushes, leaves, sponges, even with our own hands, as we learn about colors, shapes, and other steam concepts through play. All ages are welcome. For more information about library service and program, please visit our website, LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cynthia Yu. And next, we have Hassan Sassi.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, staff, and residents of Diamond Bar. I am a one-lit resident. I have spoken here before. But I am here tonight to express some of members in the community that are in a position to Mount San Antonio College bond measure that's coming up November fifth on the ballot. The reason we are opposing it because we just passed, six years ago, a seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond to Mount San Antonio College. They're asking for another seven-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars. And to quote the president of Mount San Antonio College, an interview of hers that appeared in the St. Gabriel Tribune and also SAC Media paper or the internet. And it says, Dr. Garcia says, and I'm quoting her here, that they only needed eighty-million dollars to finish a project that they started. And the question as an engineer and educator, why do you start a project that you can't finish? And you only need eighty million, but the bond is seven-hundred-and-fifty-million. The language of the bond this time is almost exactly the same language that we saw in two thousand eighteen with the previous measure. Now, what does it take to repair a roof? I'll give you an example. If my house starts leaking, I'm gonna immediately call a roofer and fix it. I'm gonna immediately call a roofer and fix it. If there is lead paint in the, I will abate it. If there is asbestos, I abate it. Two, 23 years of the same request that they want to fix leaking roofs, abate lead paint, and abate asbestos. Remember that we're still paying for the next 20 years. We'll be paying an additional to the previous bonds, measure RR, measure GO, and now measure V that's appearing in November, this November, that we are gonna be paying, they claim it's gonna be 15 cents only per 100,000, my time, okay. But per 100,000 assessed value of your home. If your home is half a million dollars, they claim that it's only gonna cost you $75. That's not accurate. I'll tell you why. If you read your ballot, the sample ballot that was sent by the county on page 29, the LA County Council assumed that what the pay is gonna be 18 and not 15, as they claim. Second, that's gonna cost us 15, sorry, $1.5 billion for the $750 million that we're gonna vote for this November. That's the council on page 29, please read your pamphlet, because I agree with him 100%. Because those are the numbers that I came up with before even I saw the ballot. It's gonna cost us, guys, $4 billion for the amount of bonds that Mount SAC has either passed or requesting. If this one passes, it's gonna be another additional bond in addition to what we're paying to the Unified School District on their measure, on their bond measure. There was a professor at Mount San Antonio College, and I'm quoting her, and I'm gonna not mention her name. It appeared in the same paper, the same paper of the St. Gabriel Tribune, that she says, for 25 years as a professor of, at Mount San Antonio College, I think that Mount SAC has built some beautiful buildings, and I agree with that. And I definitely see the benefit to the students, and I agree with that. And then she goes on to say, but I think the community needs to ask a lot of questions about how that money is being spent. And I'm quoting a professor at Mount SAC, and I agree with her 100%. How did you spend over 1.5 billion dollars so far on fixing roofs and waiting asbestos?
Thank you so much, Mr. Hassan Sassi. And next we have Jill Dolan.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, Emmanuel Baca. And Jill Dolan and I are kinda teaming up on this, so I'm gonna be quick in my little part because I wanna turn things over to her. I have been a longtime member of the Mount San Antonio Board of Trustees. In addition to that, I've had the honor of being on the Board of Governors for the system, including as chair of the Board of Governors for the 116 colleges spread throughout the state of California. I am not only proud to be a resident of Diamond Bar, but I am very proud to be a trustee on the Mount San Antonio Board. I've been able to travel throughout the state. There is no comparable community college of the status that Mount SAC is. And that isn't only buildings, it's also programs. Whether you look at aviation, music, the sciences, you can, you can go through many, many occupational programs. The strength of our college in terms of adult ed and continuing ed is unmatched. That isn't because we have laid back, but because we have been good stewards for the district that, that we represent, Diamond Bar being one of 19 cities. And so, we're, we're very proud of that, but we do this evening want to give you an update. And I'm gonna turn things over to Jill Dolan, our Community Services Director, to kinda lay out some of the things that we've been doing. Jill, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baca. Well, I just wanted to let you know and let the community know of some of the activities that will be offered to our area for free, including this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We'll have our annual Family Science Festival event. And too bad the students and the adults who participated in the photography event left because this year's theme is Picture Perfect Chemistry, which will be diving into the science and chemistry of photography and imaging. In addition to all those, the free events will include several activities, demonstrations, and tours available for all ages, including free planetarium shows, free tours of the BJ Meek Collection, which is a collection of 30 different animals that are taxidermied. There also will be a science trivia game show event at our STEM Center. So, that is this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The entire event is free, as is parking. I also wanted the community to know that we'll be having an open house for our School of Continuing Education, which offers ESL classes if you need your high school diploma, short-term vocational training. And of course, many of the people in our district know about our older adults programs. So that's on Tuesday, October 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30, or 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Lastly, another event that's open and free to the community is our annual Mount SAC Farm Day. This year, it's November 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, the event is free, as is parking. Please join us for a variety of outdoor fun that includes farm tours, a petting zoo, demonstrations of milking cows, sheep shearing, face painting, a plant sale, and pony rides. And again, lunch will be available for purchase, and all of those events are open to the community. And please remember that Mount SAC is your community college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baca, and thank you, Ms. Dolan. And next we have Susanna Carrera.
I'm here, I wanted to invite the community, we're doing an event, bringing community together for community support, because as a community, we thrive. And this is gonna be a social wellness event for adults, for children, to bring awareness to our mental health. We will have tools and vendors there that address those issues that we're having in our community, as well as we'll be having a scavenger hunt for the children. And this is Sunday, November 17th, from 8:00 to 2:00. We will also be including a hike in the morning. There will be music, food, and we're asking for a $30 donation. And we are asking for the community's support and to have everybody come and enjoy a time of fun. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Carrera.
Ms. Carrera, could you tell us where? I don't think I heard you say where it's at.
Sorry about that. It's gonna be here at the Diamond Bar Community Center, at 1600 Grand Avenue in Diamond Bar. And if you'd like more information, you can give me a call at 562-843-4424. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Lieutenant Daniel Dial. Dial? Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. So about three months ago, we had to do a shakeup at the station, move some personnel around, which opened up a vacancy with the Diamond Bar's Special Assignment Officer Team. Working closely with Ryan McLean, he gave us the time to allow some other deputies to come available. So we had a, a process where we are proud to say that we had 14 deputies apply for the position. We actually interviewed 11. And after a long, extensive interview process and selection process, we made a selection for the Diamond Bar SEO team, which is the same team that Deputy Scheller, Holden, and Toviz are part of. So Derek Melendez was the deputy we chose. So Derek's a pretty humble guy, so I just wanna give a little bit of facts about Derek. So he joined the department in 2016, he's been a member of Walnut Diamond Bar Sheriff's Station since November 22. He was your PM traffic car for a while, so it's a traffic car that works from 1:00 to 9:00. Lot of the evening commute, traffic accidents occur, those kinda things. So, he's a solid deputy sheriff, he's a father, he's a husband, he's a veteran United States Army, including overseas deployment. We think we made an excellent choice when it comes to SEO team. And kinda give a little bit of like history about it. Last time we had an interview process for the SEO team, we only received three deputies applying. This time we had 14. So over the time, it shows that the deputies really wanna work closely with the city. They wanna work as an SEO team officer. It gives them a lot of leeway to go out and hit some of these quality of life issues that we get. Sometimes talking to Ryan on the daily, sometimes on the weekly. But they really are passionate about what they're doing, what they're doing for the city. And we think, Captain Talzey and I think that we've made an excellent choice in picking Deputy Melendez to be the next SEO team member for Diamond Bar. So tonight, we just wanna take the opportunity to introduce him. You'll see him around City Hall, you'll see him around the city, you get to know who he is. So I'll let Derek just address you guys for a couple minutes, and I'll introduce Deputy Melendez to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council members. I'm excited to be part of the team. As Mal G said, you know, I've been working in traffic car for the city for the last year. You know, I'm just excited to, to be in this situation, you know? I think my resume kinda speaks for itself. And you know, I just am excited to be part of the city, help the community of Diamond Bar. And if you see me around, feel free to say hi and to reach out to me, any questions or any concerns. You know, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll do my best to take care of the situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Dial, and welcome Deputy Melendez. Thank you so much, and also for your service. And that's all the speaker cards I have. If anyone would like to speak, address the council in public comment, please submit a speaker card. And now, we will, City Clerk Santana, were there any public comment emails received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, emails were received from Dr. Hassan Sassi and Catherine Jamison, and one letter from Wanda Burton. They were submitted for public comment tonight and were forwarded to the city council and also placed at the entrance of the meeting for public viewing. And at this time, if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your GoToWebinar program. And there were no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. So once again, if anyone in the audience would like to address the council, please raise your hand as we, as we make a call. Seeing none, we will now close public comment. Thank you. And we will now move on to the schedule of future events, and then the consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events, and then proceed to the consent calendar?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On the schedule of future events, there will be a free catalytic converter etching tomorrow from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. The next session in the City Government Explain Series will be held tomorrow evening at, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Saturday morning, October 19th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at S&amp;J Grand Cafe on Golden Springs and Brea Canyon in the Plaza at Diamond Creek. The Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 22nd, has been canceled. And don't forget to join us on Saturday morning, October 26th, at Pantera Park, from 9:00 a.m. to noon for our annual Halloween party. This is a free event with games and activities for the kids, including a costume contest for the people and pets. Trick or treating will be available at dozens of booths throughout the event. There will also be a Coffee with the Cop on Saturday morning, November 2nd, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Margin Cafe in the Albertson Shopping Center at the corner of Diamond Bar Boulevard and Grand. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 5th, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMB Auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the October 1st regular city council meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated September 25th through October 8th, approval of a First Amendment to the agreement with FRJ and Associates for the administration of the city's home improvement program, which was continued from your last meeting, and approval of a notice of completion for the City Hall Roof Rehabilitation Project. And that concludes the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And would any of my colleagues like to approve any items from the consent calendar?
Mayor, there's a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lo.
Second.
And there's a second from Councilmember Tai. I tend to go to my left. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes, thank you, motion passes. And we will now move to item 7.1 for city council consideration. City Attorney Seneval, please provide the report.
Mayor, members of the city council, before you is an amendment to the city manager's contract. It only has to provision state law requires that it be, not just, well, that it be provided publicly. The two amendments would be, number one, it has a one-time additional contribution of $5,000 to the city's deferred compensation plan. And also, it adds an additional 40 hours of administrative leave. And both provisions will be effective for the next fiscal year. And that would be all that's been amended in the contract, and is before you for discussion and approval. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, City Attorney Seneval. Now, we'll like to go to public comments first. If anyone in the audience would like to make a comment, and seeing none, City Clerk Santana, or is there anyone online or on call?
Yes, we have someone on the line, and if you'd like to provide a public comment, please click on the raised hand icon in your GoToWebinar program now. No hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. Once again, if anyone would like to make a comment, seeing none, we will now close public comment and, oh, council discussion. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Fifth Amendment to the City Manager's employment agreement, please.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lo. We have a motion from Councilmember Lo.
Second.
And then a second from Councilmember Chow. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, thank you, City Manager Fox. And we're moving on to item 7.2. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was requested to be placed on your agenda at your last meeting. It's our understanding that Attorney General Bob Bonta is in negotiations with the LA County Sheriff's Department. That could impact the ability of law enforcement officers to enforce certain penal code and vehicle code violations throughout the county. Contract Cities Association is aware of the ongoing negotiations and has sent in correspondence requesting that they be made aware of and hopefully participate in some of those discussions as we believe that there is a potential for whatever changes to affect being a contract city that it would potentially change the way deputies respond to certain situations here in Diamond Bar. We provided a draft letter for your consideration and be happy to take any direction or respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And now, we'll open to public comments first. If anyone in the audience would like to make a comment on this item, seeing none, City Clerk Santana, are there anyone online that would like to speak on this item?
Again, if you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raised hand icon in the GoToWebinar program now. No hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. Once again, if anyone would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand or submit a card. Seeing none, we will close public comment on this item. And now, we have our colleagues on discussion on this item.
Okay, may I?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And just Councilmember Lo.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fox, thanks so much for putting this on the agenda and thank you to my colleagues for your consensus in in doing that. And thank you for providing this draft letter. And I am urging us as a council to approve this and send this over to the Attorney General. As Mr. Fox explained, we believe that the negotiations between the Attorney General and the party, which is the LASD, could result in in law enforcement protocols that would hurt public safety in our city. And this is the way it would work. For example, if the negotiations are such that our deputies cannot make a would not be able to or precluded from making certain types of traffic stops or certain types of consensual contacts, the contacts with a person that they suspect of committing a crime or having knowledge of a crime or or just some reason that they would be otherwise be lawfully able to stop. Now, if these knew, if this particular rule would be in place, then if our deputies cannot make that contact, they would lose the ability to possibly thwart a crime or possibly fail to make an arrest of someone who committed a crime. And the result of that would be lower public safety, it would be more crime in our jurisdiction. And this would be applicable to all of the jurisdictions that employ the LASD as their law enforcement. So there would be all the contract cities. And then what you would do is you would compare that to another city, which in our case, it would be the city of Pomona. They have their own police department. Well, they would not be governed by the protocol that would be in place for the LASD deputies. The rules that would govern them is what's in our state law and in our federal constitution. And in those cases, they may be able to make a lawful, they may be able to make a stop, which of course would be lawful, but the LASD could not. And then their public safety is not detrimentally affected as ours would be. But you need to take that a step further. If in the state of California, what you have is you have you have in our jurisdiction, some residents which are subject to one standard and other residents which are subject to another standard, then what we have is an equal protection problem, which is causes all kinds of chaos. So having said that these are possibilities, I think it's important that we have a place at the table. Not that each five of us have a place, but somewhere, someone, maybe contract cities or another entity representing us to to really bring this to mind and to look out and express our concern that public safety is maintained. And those are my comments and thank you again for bringing this to our, to the, to the Attorney General's attention.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Or Councilmember Tai.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is just another instance of Sacramento getting in the way of what cities are trying to accomplish. I sincerely appreciate California contract cities leading the charge that were taking this action and hopefully it it has some impact in Sacramento and with the Attorney General. But I mean, these guys are our police department, okay? How how is it possible that they can come to an agreement that they don't get to do their job? We've lived in Diamond Bar a long time. I don't ever remember looking at the sheriff and saying, let me tell you how you ought to do your job. I think with with everything that, the tools that we give our deputies, that's because public safety is number one for us. And we we get them all the tools that we can that that maybe the Sheriff's Department isn't able to provide, we're still, we're there for them. It's it's nonsense. We've all witnessed over the last few years what Sacramento takes away from us from the standpoint of what's good for our city. And it's it's the largest line item is public safety. It's the sheriff. And yet the Attorney General is going to say, well, you don't really get any input on this. If we're if we're not going to have a seat at the table, we need a representative that has a seat at the table and and will protect us so that the Sheriff's Department can protect our residents. So thanks very much for bringing that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. Absolutely. Public safety is number one. And Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
I'm wondering, is there any background as to why they they want to do this negotiation to establish a new contract and different type of engagement at this point? What what happened? Any new laws? Anything happen to make them to do this? So I wonder if Councilmember Lo has any insight of this.
Well, maybe Councilmember Chow, do you have any particular insight?
Just to.
This is with respect to the consent decree.
Yes, so just a little context. I mean, obviously, we support our deputies and want to give them all the tools that they can, but little bit of background. So I believe the negotiation started several years ago prior to the current Attorney General even take office. This was a result of, based on who you talked to, they felt that there was some shortcomings of LASD that needed to be corrected. And this was a negotiation between the AG at the time, who's AG of Becerra with LASD. So it started several years ago, just now that it's in the hands of AG Bonta. So to me, it's a little, it's kind of similar to, let's say, a city is being audited by the state auditor and it comes, hey, in order to correct these, this and this, you need to do this and this and this. So while I do agree, it seems like the laws, the rules are being applied just to LSD, but it's the result of a three-year negotiation between the Department of Justice and LASD that led to this. With all that said, though, I want to thank Councilmember Lo for your leadership on this. I think it's important that we have, we do have a seat at the table. And I know Contract City has done a great job in this. I'm going to talk to the LA Division for the California, so you also sign on. I think no matter what the negotiation is, yeah, the the contract cities that rely on LASD are the ones being impacted by this rule. And the equal protection clause, I I don't see how this is even, I'm not a lawyer, but yeah, it could create a lot of chaos, as you said. So with that said, I do want to thank Councilmember Lo for your leadership, but the context is that this is several years in the making.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Appreciate the insight. Grateful for that.
Thank you. And and as part of a consent, you don't get to a consent decree unless there's lawsuits. And so there's so many lawsuits back and forth, back and forth. So I I don't, we don't really know if if this is a global settlement or I don't know that for sure, but it's a result of lawsuits that have been filed.
Mayor Pro Tem, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion or question? Seeing none, do we have a a motion for this item? I will motion for this. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
And a second from Councilmember Chow. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow.
Yes.
Councilmember Lo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tai.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Tang.
Yes.
Mayor Lu.
Yes, thank you so much. Motion passes. And this, I think, once again, Councilmember Lo.
Thank you and thank you to my colleagues.
And I'll move, get us to item number seven point three. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our management analyst, Nick DeGato, will be making the staff presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, I will give the presentation on the surplus inventory of residential street name signs. Let's start off with providing an update on the current sign replacement project. In June of two thousand twenty-two, the City Council authorized the procurement of about fourteen hundred new residential street name signs. This ongoing citywide sign replacement work is being performed in-house and is planned to be completed by the end of next month. Now, let's discuss the history of street signs in Diamond Bar. Prior to the city's incorporation in nineteen eighty-nine, the existing roadway signage was just leftover hardware from the county. These signs were made out of porcelain and were the standard public works equipment. In the early two thousands, the city removed all and replaced all the county signs. These new signs focused on developing the city's identity and streetscape theme. They featured the city seal and a custom diamond shape. Now, twenty years later, many of those street name signs became faded and reached the end of their useful life and were in need of replacement. That is why those signs are actively being replaced. The new signs are also updated to incorporate the city's logo and feature design elements that are consistent with the current streetscape theme and landscape palette. Tonight, the council is being asked to provide direction for the disposal of the surplus residential street name signs. As a quick reminder, it is these twenty-year-old signs that is shown on screen that are the subject of discussion. There are four options that have been offered to dispose of the old residential street name signs, which are being, for the council to discuss tonight. Option one, to offer the surplus signs to Diamond Bar residents at no cost to them. Option two, to sell the surplus signs to Diamond Bar residents at a fixed cost. Option three, for the City Council to donate the surplus signs to a local nonprofit organization. Or option four, to properly recycle all the signs for its cash value, if any. This concludes my presentation. I will be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. And now we'll first open to public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll now move on the line. City Clerk Santana, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Yes, at this time, you please click on the raised hand icon in your go-to webinar program if you'd like to comment on item seven point three. No hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none and none in the live audience, we will now close public comment and we'll now to move, want the council comments or discussion? Councilmember Tai.
Could you put the last thing with all four options? So one of them is to sell the surplus signs to Diamond Bar residents at a fixed cost. When we did this twenty years ago, they were done on a this, I I think it said, what I read earlier was first come, first served. And maybe that's been changed because that's not a good idea, but we did it on a, what would you call that? You
Lottery?
Maybe lottery, not a lottery so much as you you put it, no, you put in a bid and I put in a bid and we go back and forth.
Auction?
Pardon?
Auction?
Auction, but you didn't have to be there, right? So and when I think about the street that we live on, we're on a cul-de-sac with fifteen homes. And there's only one sign. There's lots of streets that have, you know, if you're if you're on choose one, Belina, you you might have five different or six different Belina signs. So there's, if there are five or six people, that works out real well for them. But if with fifteen homes, if I get home and nobody else on my block knows about it, I'm gonna, I have a pretty good chance of getting that sign. So I think we ought to, I think we ought to make it available and then at some point, a point certain that it's, the auction is over. You get so many chances to to continue to bid on it and maybe somebody bids enough right at the get-go that nobody else wants to to bid on it. But then turn around and use the funds for, I thought we talked about this before, for nonprofits in in the city. So I think it's a it's a great opportunity to to get people involved and make the sign that they've seen for for years and years available to them and and they can jockey with a neighbor and raise some funds for nonprofits.
It is like an online auction, such as we've seen a nonprofit when we raise, try to raise money on on auctions? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I don't I don't foresee it being in in person, so I think online would be good.
Okay. And to clarify, who would host the auction? Is it a nonprofit organization that's doing it or the city?
No, I think the city.
Okay. And the other comment? And Councilmember Chow.
Thank you. I I'm kind of going back and forth about selling them, even at an auction. I think we want to be kind of equitable in the way we distribute the signs. I just hate to get in a situation where someone with more money can outbid the next person with not a lot of money, but maybe they lived here thirty years or there's a heavy sentimental value to them to have a street sign. I I think the process needs to be equitable and probably not money-driven. So I'm kind of going, I'm kind of struggling with that a little bit about how we can equitably distribute the signs to those that that want them. I think a lottery might be good. I think first come, first served, it will be challenging, as we've seen with the treasure models, first come, first served. See, I think that sometimes crashes the system and then you get a lot of kind of people get waitlisted, no one's happy about that and they'll try to log in eight oh one and nobody gets on. So I think a lottery, maybe opened up to a time certain, a period of time where those interested and wanted to figure out if it's one ticket per household or one ticket, you know, you don't want to get also in a situation where one person puts in ten bids, right? You don't want that either. So I I'm more thinking about from an equitable lens, how we can distribute the signs in an equitable way so everyone gets a fair shot at it.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. In in reference to the lottery, maybe we can have a question on our city attorney. Is that doable? Is that legal?
Yeah, I mean, if you're not making, if you're not making a profit for an individual, yes, it's legal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chow. And Councilmember Lo.
Thank you. I I think that the the sign should go back to the people who want them. I think that our residents have already paid for the signs through their taxes when we first installed them. So I don't, I I really don't think that anyone should have to pay for them. So in in that regard, I'm I'm with Councilmember Chow. I don't think that money should be involved. Maybe we can think of an equitable way and and when there is no money involved, there's no way of, you know, we're going to give it to this nonprofit, that nonprofit. It just takes all of that issue off the table. And and then I'm I'm conscious and I don't want our staff to spend, you know, overly amount of time and and lose sleep over, you know, just a frustration over over this project because it's just a return of things that we've already bought.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm wondering, how soon do we need to do this project? Do we incur any cost by storing these signs now? And the second question is for the nonprofits, is there any nonprofit organization that that are interested in these signs at this moment? That's my question.
First of all, there's no cost for the city at this point, no sense of urgency. They're still trying to finish up the signs. They're currently being stored at City Hall securely, again, with our existing facilities, so there's no additional costs associated with that. Certainly, we can continue to look at different options if that's the council's direction. It's my understanding that the last time that this was done, you know, twenty years ago, the signs were donated to the Diamond Bar Community Foundation and they auctioned them off as a fundraiser. We're not aware of any interest at this point from any nonprofit. So the council would need to kind of, you know, one, suggest which nonprofit, if that was an option, and then we would approach them to see if they're willing and capable of doing, you know, disposing of such. Some of them may not want to, you know, be involved in something like that. But we have not reached out to any nonprofits at this point pending, you know, council direction.
I'm also a little reluctant to give it to a specific nonprofit, because then you get into a situation where, well, does a Friends of Library want it? Or the Diamond Bar Community Foundation want it? Does the Kiwanis want it? You know, then we'll get into that whole game.
You know, I I think that, you know, regardless of what organization, there would still need to be pretty significant staff involvement with that. Physically, the signs are going to have to stay here. It's not like we're going to be able to take them over in a pickup truck and and give them to an organization to then handle. So there would still need to be, you know, my guess is that coordination with whatever organization to make arrangements for people to, one, pay and two, pick up at City Hall, which means staff is involved to kind of control the inventory and and designate times and so forth.
My my guess is after the first round, we probably won't be able to give away all the signs. That's my guess. So I think once the residents get first dib at them, then whatever's left over, maybe then we consider giving them to nonprofits for whatever they choose to do with it. maybe then we consider giving them to nonprofits for whatever they choose to do with it. That's just my feeling, yeah.
You know, again, whichever, you know, I think that at some point, it would be a finite period of time, and then everything else, whatever left, would be disposed of and recycled. Certainly, it's reasonable that not every sign is going to be acquired by, in an individual.
There are about 1,400 signs, right?
There's about 1,400 signs, correct.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilmember Lo?
Well, if we, if we take the position that we give them away from the first round, then it makes no sense for somebody to pay a nonprofit to get the signs because it's, if it's a fundraiser, the nonprofit's going to charge however much they're going to charge for this sign. And then it brings up the next question, is the city is going to be doing all the work, and the money that's raised goes to the nonprofit, and then you're going to have all kinds of, you could raise a bunch of issues that way.
Maybe whatever is not given out, we just recycle them. Sounds like that's what City Manager is recommending.
Yeah. Option number one, I think number one is very straightforward, as the word is. And whoever wants them should, should be able to get them.
Well, that's not going to work, though, because you're going, like I said, with, with 15 homes on our street, there's only one. So I, I think I like what you were saying, Councilman Chow, that, let's say it's by ticket, right? And, and if there are 15 people on my street that want a shot at it, then there are 15 tickets on, on Chinook Place. Other streets that are, are longer, I mean, you take, what, Long?
If you live on Grand Avenue.
Grand Avenue, right. So it, it will be driven then by those that are interested, those that would really like one. No money involved, I like that, too. I hadn't thought of that, that you're, you know, we did pay for that with taxes. But, you know, here, get a ticket, the ticket will be drawn. We're going to start, we're going to go alphabetically, and you get one or you don't get one. So I like that idea.
Maybe each house gets a ticket?
Yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, per, yeah, per house, not, not-
Yeah, not individuals.
Not, not per family.
Per address, yeah.
Each number of house, we have about 18,000 units in-
I mean, obviously, not all of them will submit a request.
Yeah. So that's something that's very, like, equitable distribution. It's, logistic-wise, is that something that the city can do?
Well, sure, they can throw them away, or they can put them in a truck and-
I would have to check and do a little bit of work with our staff to see what options there are and how we would be able to manage that. And have to report back, you know, if we can handle a lottery, if there's some technology that we'd be able to do that, what the best way to, you know, do that online? Maybe give people an opportunity to, to sign up, put in a request, and then we would sort through it, and then go through and pick lottery, you know, based upon a, some period of time to, for people to put in their request.
Yeah. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I would, I would also suggest that our business will get a chance to get these signs because they, they have business here, they pay taxes here, they contribute to the city. And some of the store might want to use this to decorate their store. I don't know. I'm just thinking, just thinking about that. I think we should probably let the business, the store, the retail store, here to get an opportunity to acquire one of these signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any comment? So, in regarding the options that we have, is that enough direction? We need to do somewhere steady on the logistics of this option.
I think if I can maybe just recap real quick, it sounds like we're kind of coming up with maybe a hybrid option here that includes a lottery rather than a first-come, first-served model. One, one per household, one, one per business, if we want to include businesses. And that would be a little bit more equitable opportunity. We'll need to figure out the logistics on how we can get that message out and how that works for people to put their name in the hat, so to speak, and at no cost. Is that, is that, is that what, did we get that understanding?
You, you can have that to us by Thursday? You'll be gone.
Maybe. No, no, well, like I said, there's no sense of urgency for this. Let us kind of noodle through that and see if we can fine-tune and approach now, and we'll report back to the council, you know, before we start advertising.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, colleagues, everyone. And that brings us to council subcommittee reports and comments. And we will start with Councilmember Chow.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to congratulate Mayor and the council and the city on the wonderful state of the city addressed last week, very well-attended. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership on that. I think, I'm glad that we all got to participate in some way. I think some of us kind of cringe a little bit watching us, ourselves on TV, but I think it was very well-done. So thank you, staff, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, for coming together to work on that. Congratulations to Necessito Physical Therapy. We were at their ribbon-cutting grand opening, I think, last Saturday. I believe this is the second or third location, so congratulations to Ian Necessito on the grand opening. And also, I'll be attending the Cal City's annual conference tomorrow, actually, on behalf of the city. There may or may not be a resolution to vote on Friday. If there is, I'll make sure to report back, and I have direction from my council colleagues on what to do there. And lastly, just want to mention again, the Halloween party is coming up on October 26th. That's a fun annual event, and looking forward to seeing everybody in their fur babies, all dressed up. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Lo?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Also echo my congratulations to Mayor and staff for excellent state of the city. It was really, really creative, so thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in, in doing a new format. And of course, I think it was really enjoyable to everybody. However, I did miss the cookies, just so you know. We had vegetables instead. Healthy Diamond Bar, okay. But it was a good event. Congratulations to the Diamond Bar Friends of the Library. They had a very successful fundraiser at the library on the 6th. And thank you to the mayor for his generosity in offering himself up and his family to dinner with the mayor. And you're part of the success of the library in the, in the upcoming year, so thank you for that. Can I have a photo, please? This is, congratulations to the, this is the Diamond Bar drum major team. Well, you know, Diamond Bar has just a fantastic educational program all around, and they also have a very, very excellent band program. So I was at the La Habra Lions Corn Festival over the weekend, and Diamond Bar, together with other schools, competed for, for, you know, top honors for their band program. And of course, our drum major came in number one. So congratulations to, to our drum major and his team. They were just, just really awesome. There were other teams that competed, and they also won, but, so these are our big winners, so congratulations to them. I also can, next photo, please. The Diamond Bar Breast Cancer Awareness Night. This is the football game over at Diamond Ranch High School. Not to be outdone by Diamond Bar High School, our ranch team, these are our drill team girls. They participated and provided the show as the Leo, Community, Community Leo Club, raised money to, to, for cancer awareness. And so that was a very successful event, so congratulations to them, and really thank you for bringing this, this important topic to our, to our community. And finally, this is a repeat of, this is the photo that Councilmember Chow was talking about. Congratulations to Ian Necessito for his second or third sports therapy location over in North Diamond Bar. So we're very proud of him, and he's just an enterprising young man. And if you ever do do physical therapy, I understand there's this ice-cold water plunge that you can help yourself with. So that's, that's just one of the benefits of, of this new facility, so maybe give them a visit. So with that, thank you very much for joining, and thank you, staff, for working with us on the, the letter to Attorney General Banta, and with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lo. Out in the community, thank you. Councilmember Tai?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I had the opportunity representing Diamond Bar on the Executive Committee of the California J P I A, the Joint Powers Insurance Authority, and there were over 500 members attending for the 29th Annual Risk Management Educational Forum. And it's, it is rewarding to, to hear these folks that get to understand how much the J P I A has available for the member cities and entities. And it was a terrific learning experience, and was glad to have the opportunity to do that, represent Diamond Bar. It's hard to believe we're talking about Halloween, but before we get together again, it will, actually, voting is taking place now, but November 5th is the traditional voting day, and I, I just urge everybody to, to vote. It's a, it's a unique privilege that we have in the United States of America, and we should take the opportunity to do that. So with that, I'll say good night, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. Mayor Protem Tang?
Thank you, Mayor. I praise my city staff to do a very good job in these state of the city events. And they get a very good preparation. Everything is excellent, and our mayor did an excellent presentation of what the city has been done. It's like a, what we have done, and also give us some perspective of the future plan. And as, I also, you know, made a lot of interaction with attendees there and discussed the city issues there, so I think that's a very good event. And I especially want to point out the audio/video effect of the event. Although that, just like Councilmember Chow, initially, I was a little bit afraid to see myself on the video. Then I, then I found that they are really, they really did a good job in editing, and put everything together. So I think our city staff has done an excellent job in making this presentation. So we, in the future, I think we can do more to do the public work and to let people know our, our city's achievement. And we got an excellent city staff to support us to do that. So thank you very much, staffs. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Tang. I'd like to thank staff for a great meeting today, and our colleagues, and, City Clerk Santana, you can put up the, the photo. So, you didn't know, this week, it is Diamond Bar, Diamond Bar Restaurant Week. We've been busy, and there are about 100 eateries that are in Diamond Bar. We started last, yesterday, it's been going around, and something very different from this year. It is, we, it is a 20% reward program that through for dining in 100 of the eateries that are in, in Diamond Bar. So it's, it's a great way to, to keep it local and support and savory on the different, the, the different yummy products that we have. And, and has been, it's quite amazing, the different restaurants that we have in, in City Diamond Bar, and thank you everyone's support. And don't forget to download the Open Rewards app, that 20% is legit. And with that, we, we, oh, yeah. It, it's very easy. I downloaded it last week. Yes, Open Rewards. And I want to thank, express my gratitude for an, an amazing state of the, the city address, and for everyone coming out and support and supporting, putting our city, it's been moving our city forward. I'd like to thank our colleagues, Councilmember Andrew Chow, Councilmember Ruth Lo, Councilmember Steve Tai, and Mayor Protem Chau Yutang for your, your support through this year, and especially the videos, it's been, it's very cool. And I, and thank our awesome staff for putting that together. And I wanted to give a special shout-out to C C and Martin and, and their team for putting in an amazing, very entertaining event together. Thank you so much, and I want to thank all the staff for working, positively helping and, and together moving our, our city forward. Thank you, thank you so much, and look forward to seeing everyone in the Halloween party. With that, I'll say good night. Thank you. And we will now adjourn today's meeting at 7:50. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, everyone.